Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission December 12th, 2022 meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on December 20th, 2022 at 10:30. That is an approximate time when they go to those items, so you don't have to show up before, per their schedule. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available at the back of the room, and just turn those in either to Jerry or just bring them up to the corner if you care to speak on an item. If you're an applicant, you do not have to fill out one of those. You can either come forward or we'll request it if we have a question. First thing is roll call. Everybody's here, Jerry. Everybody have a chance to go through the approval of the, for approval of the November 28th, 2022 minutes of the commission.
Yes.
Chair, recognize a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the November 28th, 2022 minutes of Pennington County Planning Commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The agenda. Have you had a chance to review the agenda in your packet? If you had?
I make a motion to move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted in our packet discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. The very first thing we'd like to do is if you have, if any commissioner has a clerical error on any one of the items that are in the consent, please note it for the record now. Hearing none, go ahead. Brittany, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Amendment Review, CU 8936, for Clyde and Diane Grauman to review a roofing business as a home occupation in a suburban residential district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit Amendment, CU 8936, with conditions. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 0633, for Zachary and Chelsea Burke to review a customary home occupation in animal hospital in an agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 0633, with conditions. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1921, for Joe Kubek, Black Hills Haven LLC, to transfer an existing vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. The staff is recommending approval of the transfer of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1921, with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 2210, for the Children's House Montessori to review a school in an agriculture district. And staff is recommending to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 2210, with the applicant's concurrence. And finally, item seven is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment, PU 1805, for Grant and Sandra Parsons, Plum Creek Homes, to review a bed and breakfast. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment, PU 1805, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Nice to have you back.
Thanks.
Okay. Does staff have any that they desire to have removed from that consent agenda?
Not at this time.
The commission?
Mr. Chair, number three, please.
Okay. Mike has asked that number three be removed at this time. Anybody from the public that would like to have one removed? And then, just for the record, I'm going to note that we, we do not have anybody on Zoom before we make the motion to change the agenda. We are noted, nobody's on Zoom right now. Okay? Chair, address the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read, with item number three removed. So items four, five, six, and seven would be on that motion. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, I believe all we have is a question on that. We don't allow any conversation, of course, but we do allow a question if it's pulled.
I've been around the roofing business before, and in looking at this, and it's probably evident, but I don't see it, where are they storing shingles and that sort of thing?
Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner.
I look at the overhead and I see by that garage that there's some stacks, and maybe that's it.
It's, they're inside of that.
Oh, they are inside that. Oh, okay. All right. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chair.
Chair would address a motion then on item number three of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And have you decided who was the witch child then? Okay. Very good. And moved and seconded to approve Agenda item number three, which is Conditional Use Permit 89-36, per staff's recommendation with 10 conditions. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eight.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we combine number eight and number nine for purposes of discussion, but vote on the two separately.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded to combine Agenda item number eight and number nine for discussion purposes only, and that will still mean that part of this motion, we do need a two-thirds to approve that. Anyone from the audience that care to discuss that? Did we get a second for that, or did I miss that? I didn't? Did you? I thought we did. Anybody from the audience that want to discuss that before we do? We're approving eight and nine to be discussed together at one time. Do you have a question on that?
I handed my sheet to Cody. Do I just come up right?
No, when we get to your item, you can come up, and that way you can speak on both items. Is it your item? Just come forward and then introduce yourself, and I'll explain what we're doing. The commissioner would, would like to discuss your items together at one time.
I guess, what I don't understand is there's two items.
Correct.
What are they, Cody?
They're eight and nine. So what, what they're motioning now is to just discuss them at the same time? I'll present, and then he'll call you up and he'll let you.
Okay. Perfect.
You satisfied with that before we have a vote out of that?
Yeah, I'm president of the road district. I met you guys last time.
That way you don't have to come up and do the same thing twice. Anyone else from the audience who would like to discuss it before we address the motion? Anybody from the staff? Commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Cody, you may just treat items number eight and nine together for discussions if you would go ahead and present those together. Thank you. We will still have to vote on them individually.
Cody Sacrament, Planner. So item eight is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-20. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to ranchette district. And item number nine is Rezone, RZ 22-27. It's to rezone 14.17 acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicant and landowner is Brian Schroeder, the agent of Davis Engineering. Location of the property is 240, or 24075 Barney Road. Again, it involves 14.17 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district. The property is vacant. Access is off Barney Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. For Pennington County zoning designation comparison, future land use is agriculture district, and the proposed is ranchette. Minimum lot size for future land, for agriculture is 10, for ranchette it's 5. Maximum single-family resident density is .01 for agriculture and .2 for ranchette. Setbacks are 25 feet from all property line for both zoning districts. Predominant land uses are agriculture and residential for both, and utilities are private for both. We also look at surrounding zoning within a half mile. So for current zoning within a half mile, to the north, there's agriculture, rural residential, and planned unit development. To the south, there's agriculture. To the east, there's agriculture. And to the west, there's agriculture and rural residential. For future land use within one half mile, to the north is agriculture, rural residential, and planned unit development. To the south is agriculture, to the east is agriculture, and to the west is agriculture and ranchette. And land uses within a half mile are either agriculture or residential. Barney Road is a 10 to 12-foot wide gravel road with a 40-foot wide public right-of-way, and the infrastructure would be private water and sewer. This was right of our department review. The Naughty Pine Road District opposes the rezone without a prop, without proper infrastructure improvements. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the subject property to create two lots. Lot A will be 6.17 acres, and Lot B will be 8.1 acres. There are approximately 80 units on the dead-end road system, so there's still over 80 lots currently that access off of one ingress and egress. Ordinance 14, road design standards for ranchette requires a 16-foot wide right-of-way, 66-foot wide right-of-way with a 24-foot wide road. Again, Barney Road is only a 10 to 12-foot wide gravel road within a 40-foot public right-of-way. Staff does not support a comprehensive plan amendment or a rezone for a property that would allow increased density on a dead-end road system that lacks proper infrastructure. So with that, staff is going to recommend denial of comprehensive plan amendment, CA 22-20. As staff has concerns with increasing density on a road not constructed to ordinance 14 standards within, with a single means of ingress and egress and lack of proper infrastructure, and staff would recommend denial of rezone, RZ 22-27. As staff has concerns with increasing density on a road not constructed to ordinance 14 standards with a single means of ingress and egress and lack of proper infrastructure.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
I have one. Cody, how did this come to be that there's 80 units on a dead-end road?
They were all previously plotted. Most, the most recent was in 2019. There was one additional lot created, but other than that, it was all, everything was plotted mostly before 1994, some between 1994 and 2006, which the requirement for a dead-end road system didn't come into effect, I believe, until 2008.
So we would be bound on okaying this over a period of time?
None necess, no, not necessarily. That's just saying that the, the plating up until 2008, you could plat.
Right.
And there was no requirement for a dead-end road. You could have as many lots on a dead-end road as you wanted, whereas the Board of Commissioners saw fit. But now, after 2008, we pay closer attention to that because of that. So with that, with him trying to split, he has to go through a sub-branch variance to try to get an extra lot on that 40-lot rule and go through this process now.
So if there are other lots that are available and people want to build on them, we're going to run into the same situation?
Correct, which is why staff has concerns with, with subdividing. Through the research that I did, 90, there's 82 lots out there. Nine are under 10 acres. Everything else is above 10 acres.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Any other questions for Cody at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want a little more clarification on, so you said there's more lots out there, but they're a 10-acre lot, lot size?
Yeah, so if I, I can pull the, the larger map up for you. So starting from Necky Oak Road down is West Heart, or is Heart Range Road West, that turns into Naughty Pine Lane, Naughty Pine Court, and then Barney Road. So on that whole system, there's 82 lots. All those lots from, or all but nine lots from Necky Oak South on that road are over 10-acre lots.
Okay. Now, did you happen to, it seems like I remember the applicant saying that there is a second way out.
So I, I do recall that from the meeting. I haven't been shown that from any, from the applicant or the agent. My guess is, is generally, and this is just an assumption by staff, there's usually like a fire trail that people say that they can get out. That doesn't negate the 40-lot rule. That actually has to be public access that everybody can use, not just, oh, there's a trail going through someone's property that you can get out in an emergency. There actually has to be something dedicated for it.
Okay. Thanks for clarification.
Thank you. Any others for Cody? Cody, I'm going to reserve my question until after the road district gentleman speaks. It's Shane. Shane, now you got your opportunity, and you can speak on both items.
Well, that's good. Thanks for clarification. Cody pretty much brought up everything that I was going to ask you guys about, you know what I mean? Because, you know, I'm not against, the road district, our community isn't against development out there. You know, all that's private land. I assume someday it's going to be, but Barney Road is already a hazard. Jan Szysinski and her husband, I think, were the first two people to build out there, and they've been out there all the years, and now Jan is starting to complain severely about the safety of Barney Road. And Barney Road literally surrounds that whole piece of property. And I guess the road district, that, that road, we do, you guys are all probably familiar with road districts. We do not have the funding to improve that road. And for those of them that have been out there, it's a, it's a hazard. Someday, we're going to have a catastrophic fire. Even after a storm like we have now, it's really hard for Jan to get in and out of there. And so you guys, before there's any further development or, or plotting or anything like that, I really ask you guys to take, who's ever doing that? We're not going to stop progress, and I don't want to stop progress, but that road needs to be improved. Those people need to improve that road if they're going to start developing more. If we, you know, it's funny, we already are over double of what they're recommending, and it's my understanding that the commission is meeting on this 40-unit rule, but there's already double of what they're supposed to be on a dead-end road. Another thing I want to make clear is there is not a secondary exit out of that property. There isn't even a fire trail. I've lived there, out there for, it's going on 17 years now, and, you know, we're country people. We have horses, and I've been horseback over out there. Should there be a catastrophic fire or something like that, there's no way people are going to be able to get out of there. So I just want to bring that to your guys' attention. I'm not, you know, when I was at the commission meeting the other day, Deb, you know, I'm just going to use a term, kind of went off, but reality is, I guess, I feel responsibility as president of the road district to make sure that that's safe, or at least emergency vehicles can get in and out, should it be, or anything like that, so. With that said, Cody pretty much said, mentioned my concerns, and now you got a good picture of that. And I would even question, there's two big ravines. We're looking at the first one, just around the corner is another one. The drainage isn't real right on that other one, and I would, I would really question 10-foot. I would say it's more like nine feet going over those ravines, and they're very steep on both sides. And, you know, back when Barney put that road in, and this comes from people that's lived there all the years, you know, that's filled in with car bodies and stuff, and, you know, it's going to take quite a bit to get those roads and the drainage proper in those two ravines going around this corner that you see right there. So the road district concern, president of the road district, I'm just worried about safety for the tenants back there, and if somebody's going to develop that, they, they, we really need help. They need to get the roads in shape before. I would ask the commissioner, you guys, or anybody to recommend that.
Shane, just for, I've got to do a point order here. You've got to reintroduce yourself for the record as the president of the road.
Okay, I'm Shane Taylor.
I should have done that, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Shane Taylor, and I'm the current president of the Naughty Pine Road District.
Okay. Questions for Shane?
How many members do you have the road district at this point?
There's 40 voting members in our road district. I think there's 60, what do they call it? On our road district, there's like 60, what do you, I'd have to.
Absentee?
Yeah. But there's 40 votes in our road district. I can tell you that. We kind of ran into a situation here a couple of years.
And those people live there?
Yep.
Forty?
All votes are not 40 separate people.
Correct.
You know, do you understand the name?
Right. They changed that a number of years back. You probably were under the old system and then.
Right.
Have upgraded. In other words, what he's stating is now, under the law presently, husbands and wives vote separately on.
No, that ain't the way it works. It's all on, and it ain't really on lots. It's all on, I'll say it is on lots.
Right.
You know, and this comes from the county auditor. There was a big.
Not who lives there.
What?
It's not based upon who lives there.
No, like, like Shane and Rochelle, we have one vote. Rochelle is my wife. We have one lot, but there's some people out there that own like two lots, so they would have only, Shane and Rochelle are one, we can only vote once.
Right.
But if I bought another lot out there, then I could vote twice. But there's at least, at least on our road district, 30-plus people already on our road district. 30-plus.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I appreciate it. Thank you.
What other questions would you guys have?
Shane, it looks like from the pictures you opt, about four years ago, they had the state and the county program for the improved safety signage?
No. What happened was our secretary at the time, Marilyn Maxwell, I don't know what she does at the School of Mines, but she talked, the School of Mines students came out and did an engineering study on the road and made recommendations. Of course, we don't have the money to support those recommendations, so what we do is just kind of, really, we have enough money to maintain the roads, gravel and blade it. Other than that, you know, it's real limited. And then some of the recommendations, like on these ravines, what they recommended we do is try to dig post holes and put two-by-sixes up so people can't go off the edge, and that might work for Jan Szysinski's little van, but it probably isn't going to work for the UPS guy or the propane truck or stuff like that. So I've been reluctant to spend any money on that, knowing that someday we're going to have to, somehow, there's going to have to be improvements on that road, and it would be a waste of our money anyways, the way I feel, so.
I guess what I was, the delineation, reflectors.
You know, I'm not.
I'm on a road district, and they came from the state for free.
No. I, I don't even think that, that pylon didn't come from the state or the county or anybody. Somebody just put that there for.
Okay.
We, after the engineering study was done, we did get signage out on the road district, and so those poles with the reflectors on them were put in. I think they were put in by the county. Actually, the signage, once it was proved, I think the county put all the signage up and stuff out there. I'd have to ask Marilyn about that. That was before my time. But those reflectors were just recently put up in the last year.
Shane, I would guess it was under that state program with the county. There was one for free, if you would sign up, and it was based on an engineering study and was to try to improve the safety of some of these very narrow roads.
I'd assume you're very accurate on that. Yeah. I, that was before my time when they got all that done.
That's the last thing I had. Thank you, Shane. Anything else for Shane? Cody? Now I got my question. Is the planning department keeping any track of any of these that have had that done? That program was really a good program through the state and the county about the safety signage that was added to road districts at no cost. We participated. And I'm going to say, and it was, it took them two years because of the COVID. You're correct, to get the, get out there. The company started, then COVID came up, and they couldn't even get enough workers to go out there, and they came back and finished them, I believe, the year before, and now they've been there about a year. But anyway, it was a great improvement on safety on some of these skinny roads like ours. We have five bridges and two dead-end turns, and it improved the safety on both, on the whole thing. And we're a mile and three-quarters in length, you know, out there. Do you keep track of those? That would be a consideration that I would have as commissioner on some of these skinny roads. When they're delineated and have reflectors on it, that's greatly improved these tight roads.
Cody Sacrament, Planner. No, I don't, I don't think we keep track of that. Our, our involvement with the road district is fairly limited. I don't know if the auditor's office keeps track of it. I would say that reflectors on the road add to the safety. The problem is, is, you know, if you're trying to get, if you have a fire down there, staff safety concerns is if you have a fire down there, you're going to get one fire truck down there in a line, you're not going to be able to get two vehicles passing each other. So people trying to get out, people trying to get down there, you know, on 80 lots could create quite the issue, so that's where staff's.
That's a good point, but I could point out that you could probably get most of this engineering, or the, which roads were involved. All the road districts didn't sign up, and I know the state engineering office over here has it all available, which ones. And the state did, it's, and it's also the new reflective signage thing, which the county's been paying for the last few years. It's a new reflective type thing, and it works very well. Just wanted to point that out. It did make a lot of these skinny roads a lot safer to, to maneuver, but it still doesn't make them wider. I agree with you, Cody.
You know, I want to add to that too, if I can, again, that's Shane.
Go right ahead.
Huh?
Go right ahead.
You know, the, in these steeper ravines and stuff, the reflectors, you can, and they are right on the edge, you know, where you go over. And I'm going to say this, and this really comes from Jan Szysinski that lives back there. You know, in a, in a wet, heavy snow or something like that, you can see where you're supposed to be driving, but it's not necessarily going to keep you on the road in a wet, heavy snow. You're, you know, there's a great chance you're going to go right off the edge there because they are right on the edge of where it drops off steep. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else from the audience who likes to speak? Is the applicant's representative here? Well, the chair would certainly consider for, so that we could get to discussion, a motion on item number eight, which would be the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move to agree with staff recommendation on CA 22-20 for denial.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, denial of Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-20. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
Explain to me, Cody, what's the mechanism for development, then? We have a road that those who are on it want to simply maintain in its current circumstance and condition. So what's the mechanism? Somebody comes out there and says, we want to subdivide, we want to expand here, we want to put homes in. Who bears this cost, and what's the mechanism by which they achieve this?
So Cody Sacrament, Planner, currently it'd be on the developer to find the second means of ingress and egress. We are, have been directed by the Board of Commissioners to address the 40-lot rule, so in the future, there may be more options than just putting in a second means of ingress and egress. But currently, as we sit today, the only way for him to, to develop would be to get a variance from the Board of Commissioners to allow an additional lot on that road or put a second means of ingress and egress. And I guess staff would change the recommendation and put denial without prejudice, so if he addresses the road concerns or gets that variance, he can come back and.
Okay, so it would be incumbent upon him to go find a, a course that would allow for the establishment of another egress.
Yeah, there's.
He would have to bear that expense, whatever it might be, yeah.
And as far as the road is concerned now, it seems like all of these roads are precarious. This is maybe one of the worst, I don't know, but we endlessly hear this. So really, the road district is maintenance. The more houses that go out there, the worse the roads get. There's no mechanism to improve the roads, in other words, to widen them, whatever, at least formally.
There's no mechanism to improve the roads, in other words, to widen them, whatever, uh, at least formally. And it seems like we, I mean, in some circumstances, I realize this is fine, you know, if you don't have a lot of people out there, that's no problem. But it, it seems like the course for development, uh, ought to be spelled out a little more clearly or, you know, not that I'm enthusiastic about turning that beautiful country into subdivisions, but I know eventually it's gonna happen, one way or another. But anyway, okay, I, that was my question, um, and I don't have any suggestion about, um, you know, activity or, or decision making on this. I think we have to do what is recommended. Uh, but this whole road situation is something that seems to me ought to be, maybe addressed over the next, you know, period of time with some, some detail and urgency. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Cody, um, are they on the Pine Grove water system or what water is out that way?
I believe they're on Pine Grove water system, which has had some issues with the amount of water that.
Volume.
Yes, correct.
Probably enough for, not enough for fire sprinkler systems in homes.
That I'm not aware of. Um, state lot also doesn't allow us as the planning department to make people put sprinkler systems in residential dwellings anymore. If the applicant chooses to do that as a measure, as like an agreement with the county, and they choose to impose that on themselves through covenants, I believe they can. Yeah, they have to, they have to choose it on their own. We can't make them do it.
Any other questions for Cody?
Cody, I, you know, I kinda struggled with this when I came into the commission a couple of weeks ago with the variance and, and I think I'd asked, you know, would we approve the variance with the forty at unit rule? And when he comes in to do, one way to get the ro- road approved would be make that requirement when he comes in to do, to do the plotting. I think, sir, you were there when we had that discussion, but, uh, so my question is, is if he's plotted, if this is plotted up, as you say, nine more lots and they're averaging ten. So if he wants to build on, he can go ahead and do it. If he doesn't, we don't approve this, he can do, build on that lot, that road as is.
Correct, yes.
Along with the other eight to nine other people, if I'm, am I correct?
Yes, every, every lot out there currently could, could build, yes.
Okay, so this is pretty much trying to limit the half, which I, after reviewing this from last week, I agree with. I mean, I was looking for options for the road district, you know, if we did something like that, we could require it if, if we decide to split the lots. So that's what I was trying to communicate to you last week. But I think as it sits and it, cause I'm, you know, I can look at the zoning around it, and I hate to deny one person one thing when he, he got something in the same area. But, uh, after careful consideration, I'll support what your guys' recommendations are.
Any other questions? Kevin?
Uh, not really questions, just a comment. Um, the way I look at this particular, um, piece of property and, and the way that it is, is, is this used to be a rural, and this is a kind of strange analogy, but it's the way my mind works, um, is that this is a rural road, you know, so people that lived out there all the time, they used to drive on it forty-five miles an hour. And as people start going and as the city grows out, they now all of a sudden set a rule that now we have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. That speed limit is set for safety reasons for the amount of people that are on the road. And it doesn't change, um, you, you know, you could maybe allow thirty miles an hour if there was only forty-two, forty-three homes. There's an exception that we look at for that forty home rule, depending on what it is. We already have eighty-plus plotted la- uh, lots out there. And to add to that, now we're looking at turning a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit into a fifty mile an hour speed limit to kind of show that analogy. And I, I can't support that. Um, so I agree with the staff as that, you know, there's not really any exceptions that I see to this rule. We're way over the amount of people that are allowed on this small road, and safety is a major concern.
Thank you, Ken. Anything else? Cody, I have just one. When we see these, and I realize the county has a number of these, uh, assorted throughout the county, uh, in regards to the forty rule, and that's why they're discussing it, did we, uh, sort of inherit most of these, uh, as grandfathered prior to the process they used to use before zoning? In other words, that these were plotted, I don't know what to call that process. They were subdivided prior to us having planning and zoning. Is, is that how we get some of these?
Uh, yes. So for, like, for example, on this road, I pulled all the plots in the subdivision. I didn't pull every, uh, like eloquently described, uh, uh, you know, ten acre, you know, southeast quarter, the southeast quarter type, um, cause there's several of those. There are only two lots created after the two thousand eight requirement for dead end road system.
Okay.
So everything before, all the lots before that, so I think there's eighty-two lots out there. So eighty, I think they subdivided that one into two. So eighty-one of those lots were created prior to the requirement for a dead end road system.
Okay, and I'm assuming road districts came along later, certainly as a way to, uh, what would I say, promote, uh, taking care of the road, cause the county, uh, came up with their moratorium that they weren't going to take on any more roads. So both of them are kinda involved in these situations, aren't they?
Yes, I would say so, yes.
I understand. And that's quite a different date. I don't know, road districts, Lloyd, do you have any idea what the date was that road districts came into existence? It's gotta be twelve years ago at least.
No, the expert would be Ron Roskinex.
Okay. I just, I, I'm sure it's about twelve years. We, we went the very first year, our, my particular road district, and I know we've been existence about twelve, thirteen years.
I think it's longer than that.
Is it?
Cause I've been on our road district for about twelve years and it existed before that, so.
All right.
I would say twenty, maybe.
Yeah. So these are at least date conscious things that relate to these situations. Okay. That's true. Anything else? Cody, um, how many homes are on those eighty lots?
Uh, I'm sorry, I do, I didn't count actual homes. Um, I can try to pull that up. Yeah, I guess I'm, I, I can count, count it for you and get it to you at a later date, but, um, all those lots are buildable where they could come in for a building permit and get a, without requiring anything.
My guess is there's probably only about twenty homes maybe out there.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I'll just ch- share a little bit about some of the discussion that the commission has had on the forty unit rule. Quite frankly, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on where it come from, how it come up. Quite frankly, I think the forty unit rule come up with some big developments that are happened, that happened, and you get too many without a second access. But I think it's doing what it's supposed to, cause anything after the forty, it brings to the attention to you guys and, uh, to us and so forth. And I think that was probably, I'm just assuming, the intention. Myself, when I look at these, when they come forward, you know, we are in the Black Hills. We are, we are limited terrain to do what we can do and, and so that's what I look at it. You know, if it was flat land like East River, put it in. You, you know what I'm saying? But with our terrain, i- it's a tough deal. But I think the forty lot rules bring it to our attention to look at, so we take those cases individually and, and carefully. But sometimes when you put ordinances like that, some people are cut and dry. It says, says this, I'm not doing it. So I, I'm just giving you my, my share on that part. So I'd look at each one individually.
Thank you. I can tell you from living on the road district and, and you talk about subdividing, I'm in a situation where subdividing is not allowed. We have covenants against it.
Yeah.
But where you could, with the rules that are on the road district, I certainly feel for the trustee that's in charge of the road district. Um, we do not have a basis, for instance, if somebody subdivided, to be like the city where we, uh, can charge someone adjoining a, an attachment fee or, or a line fee, like they do with sewer and water and that sort of thing. In other words, they have no investment whatsoever in subdividing, and the new piece of property comes in scot-free and they become a voting member. That's a bad situation, uh, for any of these people to consider, because, uh, in our case, we've spent, I bet we spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars on a road since we've been, a- and nobody pays a dime to, to join up if you subdivide. So that, that's something to be considered too. We don't have a situation for that, for these type of situations. But I can certainly see for the people that have to maintain it, have selected, they are a separate government entity, and what they say means a lot to me. Uh, if their road district is not in acceptance to subdividing and creating more lots, they certainly have a lot to say about it. They've spent the money. So that's where I would be coming from. Um, we're on item number eight alone. And did we have a motion?
Uh huh.
And it was second.
Yes.
Anyone else from the audience would like to speak on that? Anybody from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we go to item number nine, which was previously discussed. Chair would address a motion.
I move that we, we, uh, accept the staff's recommendation on RZ twenty-two dash twenty-seven and deny this request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept staff's recommendation to deny rezone RZ twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. On to item number ten.
Item number ten is vacation of plat VP twenty-two dash zero one. It's to vacate notes on the plat of lot three, block one, a mountain metal subdivision. The applicant landowners are Joey Jola and Tracy Mesher. Uh, it's located off Eleanor Drive, involves three acres. Current zoning is planned in development district. Existing land use is vacant. Access again is off Eleanor Drive, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, currently on the property, it is vacant many structures. On December sixth, twenty twenty-two, the board of adjustment approved subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-two dash ten to waive water storage requirements. A little subdivision history, on June sixth, two thousand eight, the board of commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty, twenty dash zero eight with fifteen conditions. And on December second, two thousand eight, the board of commissioners approved preliminary plat, uh, twenty dash zero eight with sixteen conditions. Um, they, as part of those plats, they put, uh, uh, requirements on there that they needed to meet it as notes. Uh, so for, uh, note number seven and nine, I'll state that prior to the issuance of a building permit to suitable onsite wastewater treatment, system areas be identified and accompanied by percolation tests and soil profile holes verified by registered personal, professional engineer and licensed plumber. In the time since this was approved, the county adopted, uh, section two of four J, which regulates septic systems. And we actually have a, a, a person dedicated to doing profile, inspecting profile holes and, and checking percolation tests. Uh, so staff would be in favor of vacating notes seven and nine. Uh, note number eight states that advanced treatment unit is required to be installed on a lot, uh, due to environmental concerns. Uh, it sits over the Madison Aquifer. Staff would oppose vacating this note. And notes thirteen and fourteen state that after sixty-five building permits have been issued, surety for increasing water storage is guaranteed. And that, uh, prior to the eightieth building permit, water storage be increased to ninety-five thousand gallons for Rushmore Ranch and Mountain Meadow subdivision. Again, the board of adjustment approved subdivision regulation variance to waive that requirement, uh, so staff would be in favor of vacating that note. Uh, three other properties in the subdivision have had notes seven, nine, thirteen, and fourteen vacated. And the request to vacate note number eight was denied in previous requests. So with that, staff recommends approval of vacation of plat VP twenty-two dash zero one with two conditions.
Questions for Cody? So Cody, since we've already okayed three other lots, this is the similar situation. So how many others are gonna come forward asking for the same thing?
Uh, there's thirteen lots, two of them are common lots, and this will be the fourth, so seven more, I believe, six or seven more.
They would probably ask for the same thing?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Other questions for Cody? I've got one. Have the, those that have already developed their lot, have they ever considered updating this engineering study? Have they ever sat down and discussed it? You know, that's a, it's a local contractor. It's an excellent report. They certainly would have a feel for the area. There might be help available in looking at updating it.
Yeah, so, so staff's made that recommendation to, to them to look at all their options and get everybody together just to do this all at one point. Um, but everybody's just individually.
Hasn't happened. Okay, thank you. That answered my question. That's what I was wondering, whether somewhere along the line, we, we at least put that feeler out there.
I have a.
Go ahead.
A question, Mr. Chair. Uh, it, it says note number eight states that advanced treatment units are required to be installed on all lots, and we're, staff would oppose vacating this note. Did we vacate it on the, on the two that came through?
No, so, uh, all that, those notes, eight was denied on every previous request, and one, there's only one house that's actually been built out there, the other two haven't developed yet. Uh, but that person was required to put in an ATU unit, so that person did put in an ATU.
Because of perk tests and that sort of thing?
So, no, so when this, when this subdivision was created, uh, and there's some, as Charlie mentioned, there's some geological surveys. And if you look at maps and stuff, this subdivision sits over the Madison Aquifer. Uh, so to put a bunch of septic's over the Madison Aquifer, um, the developer agreed to require on this subdivision to put in ATU units, which is a little better for water quality that's actually going into the, seeping into the ground, so.
Thank you. Additional questions for Cody? Is an applicant or an agent here?
No, they live in Colorado.
Okay, just wondered. Chair, address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we approve the motion, uh, vacation of plat VP two-two oh one.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, vacation of plat VP twenty-two dash zero one with two conditions. Discussion. From the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number eleven.
Item number eleven is planning and development overlay PU twenty-two dash sixteen. It's to allow planning and development overlay for a specialty resort. The applicant landowner is Black Hills Weddings LLC, Andy and Jen Fister. She is in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is ten four hundred West Highway forty-four, involves six point two eight acres. Current zoning is highway service district with an existing land use of a wedding venue. Again, access is off West Highway forty-four, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The zoning ordinance, section two sixteen, lists the following standards and requirements that, uh, apply to a PU D overlay district. Uh, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses proposed in the PU D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional use permits in a highway service district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking for highway service district. Number four, yes, the proposed PU, PU D overlay district is six point two eight acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PU D overlay. Number five, yes, the proposed PU D overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers, Andy and Jen Pfister. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven is on the next page, on the next table. Again, the plan, the zoning ordinance, Section 510, lists seven criteria that the planning commissioner may consider for conditional use permits. Again, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the use of the proposed PU D overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the use of the proposed PU D overlay should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed PU D overlay district contains adequate utilities, access road drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress that will minimize traffic congestion on West Highway 44. Number six, yes, the requested use, uses conform to all applicable regulations of a Highway Service District with improved PU D overlay district. And number seven, yes, future land use is identified as Highway Service District. Specialty type resorts are consistent use within this district. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 1967, an office building that was built in 1964, a detached garage that was built in 1988, a gazebo that was built in 1994 with a building permit, bathrooms built in 1997 with a building permit, a 40 by 100 semi-permanent tent, which was built in 1998 with a building permit, and a detached garage that was built in 2008 with a building permit. There's a current onsite wastewater treatment system that was placed in 1997. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. The applicant is requesting PU D overlay to have a specialty resort, which include the following uses: a wedding venue slash event center, which is not a use by right in Highway Service District, 10 rental cabins, which is a use by right, shower house a use by right, office buildings a use by right if it supports the business, a house and caretaker's residence, which is not a use by right, a saloon and tap house, which is not a use by right, and a wedding venue, a wedding structure slash chapel, which is also not a use by right. The subject property is currently legal nonconforming as a wedding venue. This PU D overlay will bring the property into compliance and allow the applicants to expand the venue. Staff find no, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as the uses requested are in harmony with either a use by right or a conditional use permit in the Highway Service District. So staff is recommending approval of planning and development 22-16 with conditions.
Before opening for question, just wanted to note for the record, the agenda item says 2216, your recommendation in our staff report says 2201. We should change that to 16, I believe. Open for questions. Questions for Cody?
Yeah, Cody, no comments from neighbors?
I believe there was one person who called the office that I believe Jerry talked to that was just questioning why they received, but I didn't talk to anybody who opposed it or was for it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, this reminds me of very much like Rockerville or Three Forks by Hill City, and we okay both of those.
Okay. Any other questions for Cody?
My understanding, this is only going to be for wedding venues, and it's not going to be a non-wedding rental facility?
I believe that they're going to do, might do events. That'd be a question for the applicant who is here if there's any questions.
Cody? So this is a business that's been operating for
Excuse me, Jim. I'm going to go ahead and let his, Kevin's question be answered. You have to introduce yourself just for the record, and then go ahead and handle this question, please.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Pfister. I'm the owner of this property. The cabins would just mainly be for wedding guests, so they have a place to stay when they come up there for their wedding.
Sorry.
Mainly for, but that doesn't mean that you wouldn't necessarily put it on a VRBO or an Airbnb to
Right.
lease those cabins to a non-wedding type venue?
Correct.
Thank you.
And just, let's have you stay up here for right now. There could be more questions. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I just wanted to make the observation that this is a business that's been going on for close to 30 years.
That's correct.
So it's nothing new for the neighborhood. Any wrinkles have been hopefully ironed out over time. So, yeah, I'm sure that it's just cleaning up some details, and it's good to know that you're not going to turn it into VRBOs and so forth. So, yeah.
So I will state, though, that Highway Service District does allow cabins and vacation home rentals as a use by right. So if they, if they wanted to, that would just be a use by right that they'd be allowed to, to do.
I, I'm not saying that she, we may not prefer that, but I'm certainly not suggesting that that not be done if she chooses to, but anyway.
I was going to ask that question of you, Jim, and is that something that you want as a condition, that it not be done?
No.
Any member, while we're on that topic, any member of the commission wants that added as a condition, it should be discussed while she's here? Okay? I was going to include, too, that it's been successfully operated for a long time, and there's a lot of people, I'm sure she, over the years, dealt with her neighbors many times on situations that, as this business grew. So we had seen different requests from her previously, I believe, two or three times, I can remember, reviewing requests from her, and they were always very thorough. So I wanted to point that out for the record, too. This is not a brand-new operation.
Correct. And, and the PU D, the PU D overlay, there's actually some, some time restraints, restraints on it. So previously, I mean, she could go till 2:00 in the morning. This has a time restraint where outdoor music has to stop by a certain time period.
Well, and I think, if I remember right, she accepted some of those based upon some, some items we put farther back on the property. I believe they came up in those, at those times for dealing with her neighbors so that it was traffic issues and things like that. I think that even the storage warehouse back there, so that she wasn't coming and going in at all hours. She was very cognizant of that while she was running the business. Any other question?
Just a comment that this is located right next to Forest Service Land, so there's not even neighbors right next door where the cabins are anticipated.
There's, there's housing development right, right in here.
To the
To the, to the east, yep.
But the cabins are going to be right up, it looks like, according to this, the border on the Forest Service side.
Other questions for Cody or the applicant? Thank you. Appreciate it. Chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chair? Moved to approve with the stipulations?
Can you make your comments? Sure. Well, you have to come up here. I didn't see any speaker requests. I'm sorry. Sure. I was going to, once we got to discussion, I was going to ask whether, but you can make it now, too.
Yes, I am, my name's Trudy Hire. I'm the president of the Big Piney Road District. And been there for 14, going on 15 years, so I think I agree with you. It's been longer than 12 years for a road district. We live right at the top there, straight east of where those cabins are proposed. We, about, oh, it's been seven or eight years ago, took out a pretty significant loan to redo the drainage and the, and the road to, it was getting washed out, and Joanne had to do some major stuff behind that storage building for drainage and stuff. My concern is the wear and tear on the road. There is access back behind, you know, the wedding venue, but there's always, if you go up and over, they can always, are also access right next to Dolls there, right to the, the east of there. My, my concern is that we don't have any more traffic on that road. It's, it's very steep and treacherous anyway, especially in the winter, and I'm a little concerned on those cabins because our house is just right, right next to it, so I'm a little concerned about, you know, people wandering around with that kind of stuff. The noise thing has been really good. Joanne was very, very respectful of the neighbors. As far as the noise, noise goes, I know they get complaints down across Highway 44 from High Seega, but we have never had any issues with noise up at our house. But with the cabins that close, my only issue would be the increased traffic on our little road that, that, we got a bank loan, all of us pay extra opt-out taxes to pay for that. It's very expensive. And so that would be my concern, is the increased traffic if those cabins were put up there and then rented out.
Trudy, just to clarify, so that we understand, as a commission, you're suggesting then you would do, would not, and you would have the right to approve accesses off of Big Piney as a road district, that you're suggesting that they would keep the access on the current compound, not come off of your road?
Right, yeah, yep. And there is a road that goes back up in there, but for quicker access to that shed, it comes up Big Piney and then goes over to the side and comes in. And, you know, then you'll have people swinging around, and we have a lot of issues with, in the winter, especially with people driving up in there, they slide in the ditch, because we do have signs now that we're
Just to reply to your thought there, and I don't know, we don't have our legal here, but I believe you have the authority as a road district to approve the accesses. They would have to come forward.
They would have, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And I believe that's correct under what the current road district format out of our county. Each one's a little different.
Right, yeah.
But I believe you would have that, and, but I wanted to make sure for the record, you're saying no additional accesses off of Big Piney Road District, and then keep the access to those cabins on the current
Right, yeah, that would, yeah, I would, that would be, I've been on the board since we moved there 14 years ago as treasurer, as president, because you know how that goes, nobody else would do it. But I know a big concern, a big concern is the traffic on that road. You know, we try to keep it, there's 19 homes in our road district, and we try to keep it to a minimum as much as we can because of the grade of it and, and the amount of money we had to spend on, we don't want it all tore up.
Questions for Trudy?
So the wedding venue is not a member of the road district?
Mm-hmm, they are.
Oh.
However, just so it doesn't get confused, they would be limited to whatever access they have right now. They would have to apply for additional ones, just like if they were in the county.
Correct, correct.
So does that include the, the road coming off for the shed where it shows, the big parking lot? That's the road that is okay?
Well, and Ron Bings was the engineer when we did our thing, and he, he, he said that for, and my husband probably knows, he talked to him more than I did, but that kind of got slid in. Then she was supposed to keep, because she, Joanne would rent like budget round trucks and stuff like that, because she had, used storage. The intent was that those big trucks would use the access behind the house. For the most part, they do. Sometimes, you know, they're going to come up and, and use that second access. It does not get used a lot because they do access up the back, but it is, you know, it is an access, yeah.
So that's, you would not want that one used for the cabins?
Well, ideally, no, but legally, I'm sure that, you know, they can, but ideally, no, we'd rather that not be used if there's cabins up there, because you've also got Dolls who are just, I mean, their house is right across from there. But ideally, but I, you know, I don't know the limits on that.
Cody? I have a question on this conversation. I believe when that storage facility was approved, there was some recommendation about keeping the traffic on the compound.
Yes. Coast State Regional Planner, I'm not sure about that conversation, but speaking with the applicant, she's going to have people use the main entrance off 44 and come up here, which, speaking from personal experience of being out there, that's what 99% of the people do anyways, is take that main entrance in there. So she's going to have people use this entrance and then come up and park up here, so this will be, this won't be used for the cabins.
Thank you.
So for emergency evacuation, everybody's going to have to go all the way down to the front?
I, I would say for emergency evacuations, they could, so legally, I don't know if, if we can restrict them from using that since they are members of the road district. I'm just saying for purposes of them coming in and parking in there, and the main use, that the road off 44 will be there. I, I would say that in an emergency services situation.
That it would be there.
That it'd be there for a second way to get out, and I'm not going to speak for neighbors, but I'm guessing mainly in an emergency situation, people are a little understanding.
Any other questions for Trudy or Cody? Thank you, Trudy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chair, address a motion. I'll throw in one more comment. I, I live on a road district. Some of that would depend on other things. Access to property is, is not just defined in how county ordinance is written. There's a lot of legal requirements about access and whatnot. But if that, if the main access plus the warehouse access was there, for instance, before the road district formed, they're, they're grand public. However, the road district certainly has a right to refuse to add an additional one to help out the cabins, even if it was for emergency use. They have that right. They're a separate legal entity, just as it's the same as the county. So those that are there, I don't see a problem. If the applicant is saying that they're going to direct those people from the cabins to stay on the compound on the road, I, I don't know what more you could ask to, to clean up the situation that's already there, I guess, is what I'm saying. Go ahead. Anybody can go attack that or whatever. Go ahead, Cody.
Ah, so Coast State Regional Planner, I will say that if, so when they came in for their building permit for the, for the cabins, if they're showing an additional access off there, we would require an approach permit from the road district. So the road district would see that if they were trying to put in another approach with that building permit.
And we probably know already that the road district's not going to approve it. They, they were kind enough to come tell us that, so, okay, at this point.
At this point, yeah. So that's kind of the, the second, like the
So there is a second review of the same situation?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question a little more, Mike, too?
Yep, I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd move to approve the planned unit development overlay PU 2201 with the, with 16 conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, planned unit development overlay PU 22-16 with 16 conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Change to item number 12 is preliminary plan 22-55 to reconfigure lot lines, create tracks A and B of Gennaro Subdivision. Applicant and landowner is our Michael and Lisa Gennaro. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 24404 Oak Meadows Road. It is currently zoned agriculture district and rural residential. Existing land use is residential and vacant. Layout plan 22-34 was approved on July 14 of this year with the following conditions, and those are on the screen. You can see they meet all but one. There were some issues with the certifications that were on the preliminary plan. Some property history, there are three different properties involved here. You can see those on the left-hand side of the screen. One of them has a single-family residence, a detached garage, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. The other two are vacant. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see proposed track A is outlined in red. That is the one that'll have the single-family residence, detached garage, and will be 12.40 acres. Track B will be the smaller one to the, to the south, outlining green, and that is vacant, and it will become three acres. The request was routed around for interdepartmental review. Emergency Services does approve the road naming of Pickaxe Lane. And the applicant, County Highway stated the applicant does have an approach permit on file. file. Register of Deeds said to have a comment about a note on page one of the plan that needs to be addressed, and those are all added as conditions of approval moving forward. Staff's analysis of the request is that on October fourth of this year, the Board of Commissioners approve comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two eighteen and rezone twenty-two twenty-four. The following certifications will need to be corrected on the plat, and I have a list of four of them there, and I've already talked to Janelle at KTM and let her know that those need to be corrected. And again, note one needs to be corrected per register of deeds comments. So with that, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan twenty-two dash fifty-five with conditions.
Questions for Jason? Do we need the applicant up here? I see the applicant's representative or agent is here, but would the commission like to speak to the agent or surveyor? Okay, the chair's interested in a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of preliminary plat twenty-two dash fifty-five with four conditions.
Very second. Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, preliminary plan PPL twenty-two dash fifty-five with four conditions. Discussion. I like to comment sometime, you know, when we're sitting up here, Jason, and I suppose you feel the same way when you're reviewing this, it's a, it's a lot nicer to have all these things. These drawings were a lot clearer. I mean, I needed a magnifying glass because I'm a old geezer, but it's a lot nicer having the whole package put there, and I'd like to comment on that one, that it's certainly easier for you too to review these things.
Sure.
So, that's just for the record, it's nicer than some of these tabletop ones. And we see some of those with stamps on them too, that got a lot of items missing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. On to item number thirteen.
Agenda item number thirteen is conditional use permit revocation twenty, or seventy-one dash zero four to revoke the use of an existing mobile home park on the subject property. Applicant is David Allard. Location of the property is one two three five zero West Highway forty-four. It is three point one one acres, currently zoned commercial district. Existing land use is residential mobile home park. There is special flood hazard area and floodway on the property. So if you recall, this was heard and continued from the November fourteenth meeting.
Jason, may I interrupt? We probably want to hear about the elephant in the room progress. I don't think you need to go back into all the items that, that are involved in this matter. I'm sure the commission's read it a number of times, but go ahead and address the, what I would say, are we moving forward on it somewhat? I guess would be my question.
I have every intention of keeping this short and sweet.
Good, understood.
So it was continued from the November fourteenth planning commission meeting to allow the applicant time to apply for a planned unit development overlay district by December seventh. He did come in on December sixth and apply for that, so he applied for a mixed-use structure mobile home park and a multiple-family dwelling. And that request will be heard by the planning commission on January ninth and the Board of Commissioners on January seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. With that, staff recommends to continue this revocation hearing until January twenty-third, which would be after the Board of Commissioners meeting, so we would know if that's approved or denied.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you from the chair for understanding where we're headed with this. This has been a, an ongoing thing, and it's, it's nice to see the follow-up, and I'm glad it's moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Hope it continues to do so. Any other questions for Jason while we've got him? Chair to, oh, excuse me, from the public? Anybody like to comment? I didn't mean, we don't want to leave public out of it. All right. Chair would address a motion on agenda item number thirteen.
I move we approve, or we approve staff's recommendation to continue this item to the twenty-third of January twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, conditional use permit CU seventy-one dash oh four to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three commission meeting. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on to item number fourteen. I'll go ahead and lead off. Have you had a chance to read what jury so pleasantly put in our packet on this matter? I think it's kind of self-evident. First off, the two sets of bylaws don't match.
Right.
So we were correct in assuming that when we did our point of order sometime back for Mr. Commissioner Ross Connect. I've read both of them, per Robert's Rules of Order, so you know. For Robert's Rules of Order, if you haven't read them, one, we as a commission couldn't ask somebody to recuse themselves or claim a conflict interest. They have that choice. However, Robert's Rules of Orders says that you can make rules of your own for your own organization, and we have. Both have included items for abstention in their bylaws. The two don't match up now. The one from the commissioners is very thorough. It certainly, if there's anything that it does that's different than the one piece of paper, which Mike pointed out, I had designed, I wrote this, and it was to do a point of order for Commissioner Ross Connect on something we've had here in the last couple of months. Anyway, we differ on one thing, and, and Mike brought it out. We allow the member, and it spells out what they could be asked, either from the staff, the audience, or the commission, they can be asked questions of a certain nature in regards to the agenda item, and they can speak in a way of factual information and historical. The Board of Commissioners don't allow that. When you are going to abstain, you do not discuss under the Board of Commissioners ones. So I suggest theirs is a little short-sighted, but that's only because I wrote this one. But I do, before we go on, and I'm not gonna comment any longer, make it longer, whatever we do, I would hope that our recommendation would be to make the two identical so that we operate correctly. Because we have things now as a commission, we do and may have in the future, that won't be going to the Board of Commissioners. So it's more important that we have the abstention or the recuse correct, the same as both boards. Go ahead, now the floor is open.
Okay, seven, 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 eight, and seven, nine of our bylaws would, would we redo those, basically?
Somebody, yes, the legal, I'm sure the commissioners would have the legal department write up what would properly be, and we'd have to go through a bylaw, a legal bylaw change. It'd have to be published and all sorts of things, but that's what we're recommending to get them together. Yes, Mike, you are correct. Any other questions?
I have a question about the, the Board of Commissioners requirement. It's pursuant to SDCL six one seventeen, a board member is prohibited from discussing or voting on an issue. Is board member, is the, do you know if this is in the county, the, the Board of Commissioners section of state law? Or is it any board?
I'm gonna throw one thing in. The Board of Commissioners in adopting their rule did not account for that the state law will allow the commissioner to go down in the audience and, and speak. They just put it that once you abstain, you're not involved in the discussion.
So which law is superior?
Well, they had the option to, to take the state law and include it in their rule.
But if they didn't?
This becomes a rule, right? Go ahead, and they didn't at that time when they voted it.
Yeah, we adopt it every year, beginning of the year.
Do you?
I think so.
Okay, I'll start it out. I, I would like to see a recommendation that would include, and I believe the Ross Connect situation is a perfect example where the, the action on the particular agenda item was in question. That's a good way to put it. And we needed to speak to the commissioner as an agent of his family and, and the property so that we get some factual information and historical information on it before we acted. If we were to accept his abstaining, which he did by that, and I hadn't ruled the way I did, he would have been not allowed to speak, period, if we'd have gone by the commissioner one. And, and I think that's short-sighted. There are times I think you're going to want, somebody from the public may want to ask a question of them. However, it's all eliminated if you allow them to speak by going down to the audience. So you could do it either way, either the way I wrote it up, or you could allow them to. I said when he had to go to the audience. Once the motion was made, he had to go to the audience if he wanted to speak. So, that's, that's the only difference. But again, I want to point out, whatever we recommend, I, I strongly can't say they both should be the same for the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners. They both should be the same. You agree, Brittany?
Well, I do have a answer to Commissioner McGregor's question. Under six one seventeen, it just says official prohibited from discussing or voting on an issue. No county municipal or school official may participate, so it's not just...
It's not just county commission. And since I'm married to an attorney, I'll throw this out there, if we do that, if we allow that discussion or participation, there could be a lawsuit further down the road.
Um, it does say, it just says on, at the end of the statute, it says if an official with a direct pecuniary interest participates in discussion or votes on a matter before the governing body, the legal sole remedy is to invalidate that official's vote.
Oh, just invalidate a vote.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
This is a little, this is, help me understand this, because I guess my understanding, the years that I've been involved, if, if I felt I had a conflict of interest, I'd have recused myself. Now, in this case, whether I had an agenda on the item or something else, or financial deal, I would assume that if I wanted to make comment, it wouldn't be from the dais, it would be from the podium. I mean, I'd actually, if I had a conflict of interest, I would step down from here and walk away, you know, or be silent, one or the other. But if I had a comment, I'd probably walk on, and I have before, stepped up to the side if I was possible. So that, I think that's a proper way. I don't know what happened that caused this. I think it happened, some questions got answered from the dais, and I can see where the public could see, perceivably see that, that was probably, I don't know how, how, how they perceived it, but you know what I mean? If a person wants comments or a, and they have a conflict of interest, I think they should be like a regular citizen or applicant, do it from the podium.
I can help you on that one. I read this before we asked questions of the commissioner, so, in other words, I read this whole written thing because, and properly so, the commissioner asked for a point of order. In other words, he read our bylaws, obviously, and it said that if you, we were not allowed to speak no matter what. And he was questioning that. And I looked at the combination of that, South Dakota law, which does allow, and, and you'll see that the South Dakota law is even quoted in your Board of Commissioners one, it does allow them to speak if they want to speak in regards to either opposition or support of a motion, they can go to the audience. So that's the way I adapted my ruling. In other words, I didn't go by, I included our rules, rather than then just go by Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules said that he's the one that gets to decide, and I don't think we've ever agreed with that. In other words, there isn't, the commission couldn't vote. We could vote later and, and kind of censor him under Robert's Rules, but you can't take away his right. If he believes he's got a right to vote, he's gonna vote under Robert's Rules. Well, the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission has always decided, once you abstain, you're not gonna vote.
Yep.
Period. However, there's differences in discussion. That's what we're trying to sell. So, I guess that would be the big question. Do we want to solve that? I think we should. I, I don't like the idea that the two bylaws are differently. So maybe that's what we want to move forward and let the Board of Commissioners decide how they want to draft it so both of them are the same. What do you think, Brittany? Is that what we want to do?
I think what this commission could do is direct staff to work with legal, try to match the planning commission's bylaws as best we can to the Board of Commissioners bylaws, and then bring them forward to this board.
Yeah, let's not reinvent the wheel, in other words.
So this body would make a recommendation that for staff to change those articles and then take it before the commission?
Well, we would bring them in front of this first.
And we'd have to make a motion to move it forward to the, correct, thank you.
And we'd have to okay it.
Yes, we'd have to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that they look at our language as being installed in our bylaws, and does it meet theirs, you know, their thinking? Because they're the ones that ultimately decide how we operate because we're appointed. So they have the, you know, they're our employer, so to speak. That's why I tease them all the time, call them boss.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Lurgic. I feel that any personal business should be addressed from the floor, not from the dais. So that's, that would be my recommendation, is that anybody abstaining from voting that has a, a personal, you know, either needs to answer questions or has personal comment, they should not do it from the dais, it should always be from the floor.
I, I kind of concur with what you're saying, and I wrote this. Since then, we have, now we publish the one where it's gone through and edited, as well as we have the thirty-second delay, whatever they call that word. So we actually have two television type or internet type connections with our citizens out there, and they see us here. They don't see what's going on. So I'm not sure that I don't support a hundred percent, once you abstain, if you care to comment, whether it's for questions or whatever, you must do so from the audience. Now, that isn't spelled out in either one of them, so we're really changing the words then. But if that's what we want to do, I'd sure support it, just so long as the people viewing this, whether they're viewing it, what's the new one with the thirty-second delay? What do they call that?
Live.
Joan told me, it's a live feed tech. That's really more important because those folks actually are watching you live here, and I think the thirty seconds is just to keep the swear words out, so you got time to push the button or something. And, and here, I'm probably getting in trouble saying that. But I agree, I think maybe we just eliminate all the, the complexity of it and just say, once you abstain, you may only comment or discuss from a position in the audience. You know, that's, if that's what we want to recommend to our legal or our staff to write up, that's what we should do.
That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to direct the staff to go ahead and write it up, something that would co, I guess correlate with both bylaws, that would include direction that once an abstention is done, and that would be whether it was going the two-thirds way like the commissioners do it, you know, we could vote to make somebody abstain, or they announce an abstention, they can only discuss, answer questions, or speak from the audience position. Is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what's on the table, discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
The only question, or the, the only thing I have at this point is in looking at the commissioners' pages, they're very complicated. Our bylaws are quite simple. I hope that we can write something in our bylaws that are simple, and we don't, I mean, I sure don't want to see this in our bylaws. You know, that's all I'm saying.
Correct. You don't want to expand on it just to expand on it. And, and I agree, I like your, your thought there. Besides the fact, I think the commissioners are gonna smile, as well as, I think this defines that then somebody can talk, it's open to talk, but you've got to do it from down there. We're not doing it while the audience is thinking the commissioner is pontificating on something. Follow me? It comes off much better, I think, for our citizens. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then you'll handle that from there, and we'll hear about it whenever you get to it.
Yes, we'll try to get it within a month, maybe by end of November, beginning of February.
Well, and I'm sure you're gonna coordinate with Holly too, to make sure that both ends are looking, are together.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to item number fifteen.
Item fifteen is the county board report. Uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the November fourteenth to November twenty-eighth meetings with the exception of the comprehensive plan and rezone for Leslie Rutter. These items were approved by the Board of Commissioners, and the comprehensive plan and rezoning for our gravel properties that need a lead, these items were denied without prejudice.
Okay, and I'll take the heat on number two. We should have, uh, we, the chair missed that. We should have had, uh, without prejudice in our motion as well. I apologize for that. I tried to, uh, write those things in my notes, but, but I didn't catch it, and we passed the others, so the commissioners changed it or, or corrected it and got it done so the folks could handle it right. Thank you.
That's it.
Sixteen, we haven't got any public. From the staff.
Uh, just items from the staff, our building permit report. Um, we are on the same pace as we were last year at this time. Uh, last year, um, the twenty twenty-one was a record year for us as far as the number of permits. Um, one thing to note, we did take in the building permits for the solar farm south of New Underwood. Um, so we took in over a million dollars in, um, like value, essentially, so, um, it was what, three or four hundred thousand dollars in building permit fees, uh, that the office took in, so, um, our office is over our budgeted revenue for the year by about five hundred thousand dollars, so. Going into twenty twenty-three, so the auditor's office should like that, extra funding, so. Um, but twenty twenty-two is, you know, still higher than when our normal years were, even though twenty twenty-one was kind of a record year, so.
All right. Should have helped for the payroll discussions and, and future, uh, budget discussions, huh?
Well.
This is for Lloyd, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then we did hire, uh, a building inspector. He did start today. He was sitting in the audience. He did have, um, another engagement with the HR at ten, but, uh, he did start today, so we are fully staffed in the office, so.
Do we have another meeting this month?
No.
No.
Nope.
And what's our first meeting for January? Is it, is it, the first Monday is the holiday, right? January first?
It'll be the third, correct?
No, that's county board.
Oh, county board is the third.
Let me look here real quick.
I just wanna make sure because.
The ninth.
All right. I will be gone the ninth.
So will I.
Karen, you're gonna be gone? Michael, you're gonna end up in charge.
It's the second, second one.
Uh, but that would be the ninth.
The ninth, yeah.
Yep, okay. I'll get with you before, before, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Well, we've got, it's nice to have Brittany back. Not that Jason wasn't, you know, adequate, but he, he was. It's nice to have her back. Adequate, yeah. Go home and sleep on that one tonight, right?
It's very adequate.
All right. Thank you, Brittany. Items from the membership. I think we really handled the, the biggest one. That one will get corrected. Um, and I would think there's other things we could approach that way with the Board of Commissioners. If we have a recommendation, let's do it the, the correct way. This one started out as a, a ruling from the chair that I had to make because it was requested. And, uh, now I think we're, we're shaking it out. We're still able to come out a good thing.
I think, I think you probably did. Good learning experience. I, a couple of years ago, I, when I was on the planning commission, doing my duties, I was used to on a different board sending it to the commission without recommendation, and I got, I got a lot of act for that.
That's right. All right, very good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved in second to adjourn. Discussion, hearing none and all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.